Good morning, I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 10th day of June 2021. Please rise if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton. My pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Skivoni.
Present.
All right, so um, pretty brief agenda. So let's uh, we're gonna start, I guess, with updates. So, a couple things to report, and I don't know if Ryan, is Ryan on?
No.
And the COVID numbers last I looked were very good. I mean, yesterday's numbers, which reflected the day before. So it's really those people who tested positive on June 8th. There were zero in Southampton again, which was great. Nobody tested positive on that day. That's not to say the day before, I think there were two the day before. We've been averaging about one a day. So um, you know, on the East End, it's averaging about two a day for the five East End towns. So the numbers are definitely getting better. I'm looking to see if there's gonna be a Memorial Day weekend spike. But uh, but so far, so good. If there is, we probably won't have, would not see it yet. We'll probably start to see it any day now because of the incubation period on COVID. So that's all, you know, one other thing maybe on COVID. It just related to COVID. You know, we are starting to migrate back to pre-pandemic normalcy with the, in terms of town government. So effective June 14th, well, you know, our business hours, hours of operation will go back to what they were, 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM. At Town Hall, we're gonna take the visitor capacity to 38 visitors at one time. The pass system and the volume wait system will still, will still keep those in effect, limiting the number of people in one space at a time. So uh, but for the most part, you know, things are up and running. I think all the senior centers now are up and running, youth programs are up and running. And you know, people should check if there are mask requirements for certain activities. You can come to Town Hall without a mask, yeah, bring it with you. But as always, you're vaccinated. We will allow you to go to various offices as long as you're fully vaccinated without the mask. If you're not fully vaccinated, we expect you to wear a mask. And you know, we'll continue at the next Town Board meeting with the hybrid model. You know, I'll confer with, with various entities, including Charlie at CTV, but I don't know if we'll do it beyond the next meeting. Well, we can discuss that, but we'll do it at least for one more meeting. And in terms of work sessions, I'd like to start coming back on work sessions, even though there, you know, there is some, some benefit to Zoom and maybe we can do a hybrid work session. Sometimes we can bring speakers in via video conferencing rather than, you know, having them travel long distances. So it's something we can certainly consider in the future. So I'll work with Janice and Frank and let you know, but be prepared that next Thursday's work session may be an in-person work session. Okay, um, a couple other things. You know, the county is launching an initiative for electric vehicle charging stations. And I'm trying to get the information so that we can participate in building out infrastructure throughout the county for charging electric vehicles. They want Southampton to be part of that. And then I just literally got an email a moment ago about another, I believe, county program that has to do with micro-transit. Let me see if I can pull that up. And so they, Suffolk County is announcing that they're partnering with a company called Via or Via. It's one of the world's leading mobility tech providers to develop Suffolk Transit on Demand. It's a new transit service operating, it'll operate within the town of Southampton. And it means there's no schedules or designated routes. The riders have the ability to request a ride when and where they need it. So this is launching on Wednesday, June 16th. It'll operate weekdays, 6:30 AM to 8:30 PM. Riders get their first five rides for free, which is incredible. And then the service costs $2.25 per ride, which, I mean, this is, this is really great. I, you know, you don't need a car now. A $2.25 a ride is much lower than any of the ride-sharing services. That's, that's really incredible, and five free rides to get people going. And I don't know how far they'll take you, but I imagine it's anywhere within the town of Southampton. I, I think Legislative Fleming has been involved with this, so she might have some more details. We're trying to get the word out and there's marketing flyers and general information, including zone maps, social media assets, how-to-ride flyers. So we'll, we'll start to see if we can distribute some, some materials through our, maybe through our CRC. So um, that's a, that's gonna be a great thing. That really, I think it's gonna help people a lot. And it's hard to run public transportation in a rural setting. And sometimes you see the, you know, the buses going around in the middle of the day, pretty empty. Though in the morning, as they bring workers to work, and in the afternoons, when they're taking people back, the buses are jammed. But um, you know, midday, the buses really don't get you where you need to go. They get you from stop to stop, and then you still have to get from the bus stop to where you need to go. So this on-demand service could be tremendous. So we appreciate the county's help in piloting it here in the town of Southampton. And we thank Legislative Fleming for that as well. All right, um, that's all I got. You guys have anything additional?
I have a couple of comments to what you just brought up. I find that all very, very exciting and with the micro-transit system that the county is putting in place and hopefully we can get the commuter connection up and running. I know that's been in the news, there was an article on that, so fingers crossed there. And maybe we can integrate the two to make that work more efficiently. Yeah, and I had a question about our town facilities and our CAC meetings. I know the Noiac CAC would like to use the schoolhouse and we should probably develop policy on those meetings and whether or not they can meet in person or, you know, it probably could be up to the CAC itself, whether they want to continue via Zoom or meet in person. I know that one CAC would like to use our facilities and I'm hoping that those can be open pretty soon. Other announcements, we have elections. If you are in one of the villages in the town of Southampton, you have an election on June 15th. Now, I know we just finished our school board elections in May, but we have a couple of elections coming up and I just wanted to bring that out there. Also, townwide, there is a, there are political primary elections on June 22nd. And you know, we live in a democracy, so there are elections many times a year. And this is, this does not disappoint. So make sure if you are in a village, go out and vote your elections on the 15th.
Yeah, just to add on that, Tommy John, that we have early voting starting this Saturday as well. And the facility is at Southampton Campus in Southampton, the Stony Brook Campus in Southampton.
Anything else, Councilwoman Skivoni?
No, I'm good.
All right, what about other Town Board members? Julie?
I just wanted to remind everybody that Battle of the Bands is on for tomorrow night, Friday, at Poncog Beach. If you want additional details, please call our youth bureau at 631-702-2425. We hope the weather will be great and the bands, I'm sure, will be great. And I, I hope that people go out and check it out. It's a great night.
What time it start?
That, I'm, I'm not sure. That's why I gave the Youth Bureau phone number. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Also, we have our little food pantry up at the Crowhan Center in Flanders. It's being heavily used. If you can get a chance to donate there, that would be great. Or just spread the word that we are looking for donations. You can just drop them off yourself or you can drop them off at the Crowhan Center or at my office. And that would be lovely. And also, this coming Wednesday, June 16th, at 10 o'clock, we're having the launch of our partnership with Habitat for Humanity at the North Sea Transfer Station. This is a program where residents can bring in certain items such as furniture, appliances, there's a whole list of stuff. And they can donate it to Habitat for Humanity. They will have a truck there at the transfer station. Anything that they do not accept, you would have to get rid of at the transfer station for the usual fee or take it back home. Again, this is for residents. Any contractors who want to get involved and donate things can call Habitat for Humanity directly and either drop it off at the reuse center or Habitat will come and pick up stuff for free. So I'm hoping it'll be a great program. Everybody's invited for our launch on Wednesday at the transfer station at 10 AM. And I think it'll be a great thing.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with an update? Rick or John? Let me, there's one other thing I wanted to mention, you know, with a, if you go on the town's website, you can, you can, you, you can sponsor, I'm not sure what the word is, you can donate. We're trying to create this tribute to Edith Windsor, the woman from Southampton who fought the fight with, at the US Supreme Court to legalize marriage for all. And there are, we're building a platform of interlocking hearts and each heart can be engraved with the names of a couple who got married or someone you want to remember, who you loved, or there's a certain number of characters, so you know, letters that you get, I think it's five lines or four or five lines. Anyway, there's a template online, but we, you, you can buy a heart for, it's a thousand dollars. It will go to create this meaningful tribute. And then any additional proceeds will go to the clinic, the LGBTQ clinic at Southampton Hospital. So it's a great project. We're hoping to have this thing built by October. I don't know if that's going to happen, but you know, soon thereafter. And Sunday, I know you're working with me on expanding the, we're, we're thinking now of, we're gonna have the central heart, which will be composed of hundreds of smaller hearts and then a sort of a rectangle frame around it. But I need to know how big that frame needs to be. And what we're thinking now is that frame will be traditional paving stones that'll also be engraved at a lower price. They won't be a thousand dollars, it'll be more affordable to people. It's a, you know, obviously a smaller paver. And you know, we don't know how many there'll be yet because we haven't figured out how big that platform needs to be. So Sunday, I could use your help in figuring that out and exactly, you know, how much room we have outside of Town Hall.
Absolutely, I'm happy to, to go out there. I can, you're body yellow as well to figure out, you know, how wide it can be. I know there's utilities out there, so whatever. But happy to do that, glad to, you know, glad to assist in the process.
All right, good. Yeah, and if you're interested in, in getting a heart, I suggest you do it because I, I do believe they're gonna sell out. There's people all over the country who wanna be part of this tribute. So if you want a heart, go online and fill it out. And that, you know, the very center heart will be, it'll say Edith Windsor and Thea Spire. That was the, you know, Edith, the woman she was trying to marry, who she couldn't marry, was Thea Spire. You know, Edie passed away, I think, three or four years ago now. And it really was her second wife, Judith Casey Windsor, who came to me and, you know, said, "Let's do this tribute. Let's, let's create something here in the community that she loves so much." So it's, it's really gonna be a nice thing and, you know, we're putting the pieces together. The hearts, the hearts are all coming together. But it's, it's gonna take some, take a while to get it right. Okay, anything else, any other?
Dave, if I could just mention, you had brought up the hours of operation expanding back to normal. And my office actually runs from 8:15 to 4:15. We'll have to be in the building by four o'clock so that it will work in conjunction with the, the security and how we're set up out front. But um, you know, they're able to access the building at 8:15 to come into my office if they're trying to get something done prior to going to work and such. We try and give them a little extra time, so.
Okay. You know, there's some COVID things like Zoom that have proved helpful. Well, at some point, we might have to have a conversation about outdoor dining and outdoor activities. You know, some people still feel more comfortable being outdoors. And I think we should probably extend the outdoor dining through the summer. But we need to talk to Ryan about that. And I think it'll, maybe it will allow some of the restaurants to recover from a very challenging period in that industry. So I'm, I'm not saying let's have the conversation now, but I do think we should sort of keep the outdoor dining at least until, you know, the governor removes the emergency order, you know, COVID is behind us. But we might want to keep it beyond that as well. Because I, people are happy with it, they really are. So all right, anything else? We're a little bit ahead on our agenda, but I did see Michelangelo was here, so maybe we can bring him in a little bit earlier, if he's still on the call. So the, the first item has to do with bike sharing and creating some additional places to put bikes. And you know, in the pandemic, I think, too, a lot of people turn to outdoor recreational activities, be it our parks, our hiking trails. And yes, a lot of people bought bikes, they didn't have bikes and spent a lot of time on bicycles. And I, I think that's gonna continue too, but it does become really apparent that we don't have great infrastructure for biking. We don't have bike lanes where we need them. We don't, you know, have bike racks where we need them. And not everybody has bikes and that's sort of where Pedal Share comes in. Do we have Michelangelo? Because I can't stall much longer here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, no, I'm, I'm on. I had a technical difficulty. I had a couple of maps I wanted to show you guys, but I am here and ready to go if you guys are.
Do you want to re-log in so we can see your maps?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on that right now, if you just give me another moment.
All right, yeah.
Can you keep the stalling going?
Yeah, I could try, all right.
Well, I'd like to do a, a little bit of a lead-in on this supervisor, if I could. This is an initiative that we started actually before the pandemic. The, the county of Suffolk actually contracted with a company named Zagster. And we piggybacked onto that contract and put some bike shares in Hampton Bay. So you probably all remember that. Now, during the pandemic, that company, Zagster, it folded. It's gone. And a new contract was awarded to Pedal Share, which is a local company. And we continued that, the county contract in Hampton Bay. And the contract, we, we signed it in such a way that it could be used in different parts of the town. And we've been looking in different parts of the town, as well as our comprehensive plan, our master plan and our hamlet plans to see, you know, where bike sharing and getting people on bicycles would, would work well. And Michelangelo and I have been working with other municipalities and we've found some, we've developed some really good places, some north-south routes that we think that would work well. Now, Michelangelo, are you ready?
Yes, and I do apologize, I got kicked off and luckily IT saved me. So we're, we're, you're gonna talk about biking kind of in a more macro position and Jonathan Keys was gonna join us, but I don't know if he got the memo that we're going a little early. But essentially, we've made some commitments via our adopted plans, as well as to the county, that we're going to pursue walkability, biking. And here is the county's hike bike master plan, where they contemplated this on a more regional scale. And we participated in this. And as you can see, the more, I'm gonna zoom in just a little and please let me know if it's clear. But the, the more, the solid lines are, are existing and these dotted lines are proposed. So you can see that they've envisioned expanding and further connecting Greenport through Shelter Island, North Haven, Sag Harbor to our hamlets and, and so forth. So we've been pursuing this in a number of different ways, whether it's through expanding infrastructure such as bike share programs and/or bike lockers and/or expanding our lanes or in one instance, our Hampton Bay TAP grant, which is located right here and I have another map of that.
Michelangelo, can I ask you a quick question? When you say the solid lines are existing?
Yes.
That means what, that these are roads that have a designated bike lane with charros, charros or whatever they're called?
A bike lane or a bike route. I have the key down here, so it, it's delineated. And what that means is, go ahead.
Yeah, no, so there is a road that, all right, that has a safe place for people to bike on? So 27 has a safe bike lane?
Well, according to the state and the county, it does. We may have a different opinion of that. So what, years ago, the, I believe the state and county worked to create this bike route with some signage on 27, but they left the hamlet centers to us with the idea that people could walk through a hamlet center and they wouldn't be biking through. So that's why it feels disjointed at times. But yeah, another example is Ocean Road, if you could see right here, running north to south. You know, that is a bike lane. Whereas the Turnpike, Bridgehampton Turnpike, it, it's considered, well, it's not, actually, it's not even considered a bike route or a bike lane. So you know, the difference between a bike route and a bike lane is that three feet separation on, on the, on the side of the road, three feet makes a bike lane. If at some point it's not three feet, it designated as a bike route. So you know, we have existing infrastructure, but how can we improve it? How can we make people feel more safe? And how do we connect our downtown centers to our focal points? And that's kind of been our goal and that's, that's our, those are our comp plan goals. You know, this is something that we've been, we've recognized, yes.
The, the key down on the bottom has the Bridgehampton, Sag Harbor, Turnpike as a shared bike path.
Okay, it does, that's it.
That has a significant shoulder on it.
Well, 114 actually has a dedicated bike lane, which is great.
Yes, it does.
Then it's, it's marked, what do they call those, with charros or something?
I actually, I think the terminology for that might be like a boulevard because it has like a separation of like two feet, if I'm through North Haven, we're speaking about.
Yeah, so they have it marked with these symbols, these icons of the.
So there's the share road symbology and then, of course, they, they, they do, they're set, there's, this is a 200-page document and if I go through it, it could end up lagging significantly. But they do have specific terminology for that. I do wish we had Jonathan Keys who's more familiar with some of this terminology.
I just, I just thought it was important that we know what our target is. Are we trying, are we trying to create something that looks like 114? Or is it something other that you're trying to, you know, roll out here?
Well, it, it would depend on the area. So in certain instances, 114 is heavily, heavily trafficked. It has a high mile-per-hour speed limit. And in certain instances, yeah, we would want to mimic North, North Haven. If we were looking at the Bridgehampton Turnpike, I would want to mimic North Haven. Of course, that's up to the, to the county because it's a county road, but that would be a goal. 27, if we had the, if we have the space, I, I would also argue that that's significant. But again, that's not even our, those aren't our lanes. When we start thinking about town roads, well, then we're on Scuttle Hole where we have a proposed route. And, or, or Noiac Road or North Sea Road where there's something proposed, but we don't actually, we don't have anything that's designated.
114 is actually State Road, not County, but that's okay.
Oh, State, thank you, I appreciate that. So since COVID, pre-COVID, as Councilman Skroni highlighted, that we had an agreement with Zagster, Pedal Share stepped in, but we did talk about expanding bike share. And we, this is as well as a county initiative. And so we looked at Bridgehampton as a possible location. We identified some locations and the beaches. We identified Long Beach in Sag Harbor to connect to Sag Harbor. If Sag Harbor was to move forward with a bike share program. And we identified the Hamlet Center itself as a municipal lot and the LIRR station, which surprisingly, the LIRR station was interested. And so we hope to launch that this, this season and hopefully in the coming weeks. Additionally, I did, I wanted to briefly just highlight the TAP grant. So the TAP grant, we're gonna be coming back to you in a few weeks. We're, we're meeting with our consultant. Just as a reminder, this is a, a close to a million dollar grant we secured to connect Red Creek Park to Good Ground Park to our Hamlet Center via a bike lane and, and a multi-use path through this yellow line right here. So in a couple, a couple of weeks, the consultant will present a more detailed map and plan as well as how we plan to move forward. So these are some of the initiatives we're pursuing with biking. And you know, are there, I guess, kind of a larger question is, is the town council interested in, in other portions of the town and how we can pursue them? Are we comfortable with the bike share program in Bridgehampton? Are, are, do we see ways in which we can enhance it and, excuse me, enhance it? So you know, I'm open to your comments and questions.
So what we have existing is a, if I could, a bike lane in the North Haven, Sag Harbor, Long Beach area, as well as a shared bike path on Bridgehampton, Sag Harbor Turnpike and a bike lane on Ocean Road, which makes a very, very nice north-south bike route. And I know that the Village of North Haven is a designated bike lane up to the ferries as it is through Shelter Island. And you know, perhaps the county, you know, would, would want to chime in here and to create a bike link between the South Fork and the North Fork, utilizing the bike path on Route 114 and contracting with, with Pedal Share to put these rentals in place so that people could literally travel north to south, including the Long Island Railroad Station, which by the way, has bike lockers in, at the station itself. So we're excited about doing this and, and I just would like to hear comments from the board.
And if I could for just a moment, Bridgehampton, it, it makes a lot of sense because we're, we're closing that first and last mile by being at the LIRR station, municipal lot. And as Tommy John pointed out, connecting to Bridgehampton via a bike lane. So there's a lot of synergy here and we want to explore that. Additionally, if, as per the sustainability plan, one of the direct recommendations is explore the feasibility of public bicycle rentals with bicycles made available in hamlet centers and beaches. Altering identifying pursuit strategies to increase rental availability through the private sector such as offering license for bike concessions on town-owned land. So essentially, this is a recommendation right out of the sustainability plan where we're able to connect the hamlet to the beaches and we're closing that first and last mile. And I think we got, Jonathan Keys may have also been able to join us.
Yes, hey, I, I am here. Good morning, everyone. And first off, I do apologize both for joining a little bit late and, and the fact that I don't have video happening. I, I, when I joined via my VPN, I don't have access to my webcam. So I, I hate to be, to violate Zoom etiquette, but at the moment, I can't do both and I apologize. But yes.
No need, you were, you weren't late, we just started. We started 10 minutes early, so you were right on time.
Great.
So my apologies for starting early, but we got through the earlier agenda items quickly.
Oh, of course, that, that's no problem. But it's, it's great to see you all again and to be talking about bikes again. So you know, so I, I, I. So, you know, so I, I, you know, I think as Michelangelo has probably presented, we did complete this, this hike bike master plan last year, with a lot of great input from all the towns, and really villages as well, across the county, and a lot of bike and pedestrian stakeholders and advocates. And, you know, broadly speaking, bike connectivity is, is something that we're really looking to promote countywide. We were happy that our bike share system was able to not only recover from, from some unexpected changes during COVID, but actually expand this year into many new communities, and really start to fulfill the regional vision. So, in addition to the locations we were at last year, working with Pedal Share, we've now expanded into Huntington and Riverhead, and, oh, there's a great shot.
I thought we should just throw this up there.
Yeah. That was a great day. That was a great day. Huntington, Riverhead, Lindenhurst, so really starting to realize the vision.
Totally kind of executive to put his helmet on.
Well, for the photo op, I think he...
My message, I don't know.
But if there are any specific questions I can speak to, I...
Just so people know, you know, that, that ride, the woman on the right is Kathleen King, the founder of Tate's Cookies, over there on the right, who's an avid biker and a big supporter, big supporter of getting people out on bikes and creating more bike infrastructure.
Think you can see the cookies in our baskets.
Yeah.
My eye went right there. I couldn't even help myself.
Cookies make you bike a little faster, so.
Right. So, essentially, you know, we do have, we're working on separate individual projects, but all under the same umbrella of increasing biking, you know, biking connectivity, increasing other forms and alternative forms of transportation, and we're moving forward.
So, Michael, this is John Boovie. I did, I had a question on this when we were looking at this a number of years ago. You know, we had some plans that, particularly on our local roads, for bike lanes to be marked, and, you know, that kind of stalled. I'm interested in the, is there a funding relationship with the county to help support some of those efforts within the municipality? Or is that only for county roads, or county jurisdiction? Or is there grant money or other monies to help us offset some of the costs that we can establish some of those bike lanes, which is generally, you know, painting and smoothing of some of the areas? I'm particularly thinking of the western part of the town, where, you know, there was quite an elaborate plan evolved there to, to provide those, those, those marked lanes for, for biking.
So, I'll let Jonathan Keys quickly answer the county portion of that. But regarding, there's also federal funds, as, I mean, you are probably aware, the tap grant, which is administered through the state, we were able to, you know, pursue that through our park-to-park bike route in Hampton Bays. Alternatively, if and when there's additional funding through the tap, we could pursue that for our local roads, if we have a concept plan that really makes sense. And, you know, last time we chose Hampton Bays, we had something that we contemplated in the downtown of Bridgehampton that was kind of a, off a train spur, along Bridgehampton Turnpike. We opted to just pursue the Hampton Bays Park-to-Park One. So, next time there's funding available through tap, I would recommend that we pursue something. But Jonathan?
Yeah, so we, we do have funding sources that would be available, that, that can be made available to local towns, mostly under our Jump Start program, but we also have our downtown revitalization program as well. Each of those have been used in the past to support. The downtown revitalization program, somewhat smaller award program, but it's been used for things like bike racks and permanent bike infrastructure in downtowns. And the Jump Start program, which is somewhat larger, that is something we could have a discussion about, about whether there might be an opportunity, if, if, if there's a will at the town to pursue on-road infrastructure for bikes, that, that may be potentially something we could talk about funding.
Are you getting federal funding through the CARES Act, or, you know, the stimulus?
I believe so. I have not been involved in those conversations, and about where that money might, might be going once it's received.
There's a lot of, a lot of infrastructure money coming, I guess maybe in the bill that hasn't been approved yet. But it's looking like there will be infrastructure money. I don't know what will be targeted, but this is kind of a public transportation, as well as a clean energy initiative.
Yeah, and we, we did, in part of our, our request for federal infrastructure funding, include a request for funding to build out some portions of this hike and bike master plan. And, you know, the specific corridors are generally, will probably more focus on, on areas that can be, that can accommodate shared use paths. So, along like right, utility rights-of-way, like the North Shore Rail Trail is a real good example, if you're familiar from Fort Jeff to Wading River, of the types of facilities we'd like to build out kind of early on, since they, they have sort of the broadest level of access for riders of all ages and abilities. But we are, we did include a request for funding under that, yes.
Are you guys looking at any wooded, now, maybe the one we're doing in Good Ground Park is more of a, a natural, you know, scenic bike trail, but I, I'm an avid mountain biker. I love to mountain bike. You know, it, it's nice to be able to get off-road and be out in the woods. You know, sometimes there are conflicts potentially with hikers, but I usually don't see any hikers when I'm mountain biking.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's nice that we have such, you know, hundreds of thousands of acres of open space out here to be able to enjoy some of it on a bike. I know out in Montauk, the Hidden Woods property is, you know, very popular for mountain biking. I don't know what we have in Southampton. I know Saville is a very popular mountain biking trail in the woods, but, you know, just something to look at, because there are other people besides myself who like to go biking in the woods.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and I will add that Mike Viddy of Climb, of Concerning Long Island Mountain Bikers, was, or is a member of the Hike and Bike Technical Advisory Committee. So he and his group had quite a lot of input into this document.
And Jay, just so you know, I, I thought that perhaps the Girl Scout camp would be a great spot for a, some of those biking trails, and I believe that we had talked about these, the climb people and contacting them. I'm not sure what happened. I'll follow up with Lisa on that.
Yeah, what might be nice is that we could come up with a route that sort of goes from Hampton Bays to Riverhead, you know, through, through the woods, where you could go on a mountain bike. That would be a great... You know, Girl Scout camp is great, but it's, you know, it's 60 acres. You can cover a lot of terrain on a mountain bike. So, there is a potential there.
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's allowed in the Pine Barrens, but certainly hike because...
Yeah, it's definitely allowed in the Pine Barrens. Rocky Point has miles and miles of mountain bike trails. I, I think the problem sometimes too is also making it a little bit wider, so you're not impacted by any of the ticks and things like that. I think some people have...
Right.
...talking about that, but...
It's our passive recreation.
Maybe that's something that could be created, if we can go, let's say, to make it to Riverside from Hampton Bays to the woods would be awesome.
That would be awesome.
We have trails when I go from West Hampton to Rocky Point would be awesome.
And you know...
We have this trail going in, in Hampton Bays that will get to Red Creek, so it's really just getting then from Red Creek to Riverside.
And I want to mention too, we, I mean, you can see here that, that along 24, that's a bike route right now, but we have a little bit of funding to advance conceptual design, design on a few different corridors from this plan. One of the ones that we are looking at is, is the green dotted line that you see on the south side of, by the Sears-Bowles County Park area, yeah, a connection between 24 and that facility that I know eventually could head out east to Good Ground Park. So we're trying to refine that, that design a little bit more, take it from a green dotted line to actually something that, that looks like a plan. So that's, that's one of the quarters that we're looking at advancing.
I have a couple of questions. I guess about the infrastructure. So, in many roads, there doesn't seem to be enough room for sharing between the cars driving and the cars parking, and then having bikes and strollers and people walking. And it seems to me that to widen roads to make it safe, that's an awful lot of money. Is there, in perhaps future funds to do stuff like that? And I mean, and I know you can't do that to every road, but perhaps to destinations such as, you know, from a downtown to a local beach. I'm specifically, you know, I'm thinking about over Poncog Bridge, from downtown Hampton Bays to get to the beach. It's tough these days, and, you know, and we don't have a lot of sidewalks. So I'm just wondering about the future funding for that. I think it's a great idea to have the bike equipment infrastructure, but if you don't have a way to get somewhere safely, then it makes things difficult.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, widening roads would not be the, the first and foremost strategy that we would look to take. So a lot of the plan tried to look at the existing right-of-way and the existing road width, and see what sort of facilities would fit best within that road. So that's why we, we run the range from something as, as, as little as signing a bike route, and then what, sort of moving up the ladder to bike lanes, to buffer bike lanes, to fully separated shared use paths. Because somewhat counter-intuitively, the, to widen roads often would have the result of encouraging cars to drive faster, which would make it even worse for cyclists. So it'd be, the more constrained right-of-way can actually sometimes work to the advantage of cyclists. So it wouldn't necessarily be a strategy we'd look for. We'd just try to look for the existing conditions and what, what the best case would be in that situation.
We've actually contemplated this. A couple of years ago, Tom Neely and I took a look at Poncog Ave and thought, how do we connect from the downtown Hampton Bays to the beach? And Poncog Ave is quite wide, and mostly there's parking on the left and right of the, on either side of the road. And we thought, well, what if we bumped the parking further into the road, and then created a bike, using the parking as a buffer between a bike lane? And this is something that we were thinking about, and we really kind of identified, like, very small portions of choke points that would be an issue, not on Poncog Ave, but further along. I think this is Shinnecock, we probably... So, we noticed this was an issue, because the road narrows there, and people have built up to the, into the right-of-way. So it gets complicated in that portion, but it sadly only takes one or two choke points to deter people from pursuing it, because they, they get quite nervous at that, at that moment, myself included. But this could be something, this could be a really a wonderful idea to pursue, because it would connect us to Hampton Bays downtown, and that's, that's synergy that we've been looking for, similar to what we now already kind of have in Bridgehampton via Ocean Road.
And, and I do have one more question. I think Jonathan, you talked about utility rights-of-ways. So I think the perfect way to go from one end of Southampton to the other is along the railroad tracks. I know there's certain points, like over the bridge, over the canal. Is, are there any thoughts to doing anything along the tracks?
There are, yeah, and I actually think you can sort of make it out on this plan, the, the sort of blue dotted line here that runs along the railroad tracks just east of the canal. I'm, and Michael, I don't know if you can, I don't recall what the symbology is for that, that typology, what that, that dotted line was representing.
The rail, the rail is the, is this off to the north. This blue one is Montauk Highway. So, and the, I guess, take a look at the green, oh, sorry, bear with me, we're gonna, we're going into the ocean. I gotta zoom out a little. It takes a moment. This is what I was...
I can't recall what the...
As a long-term project, is what we've identified as the rail. I'm just confirming, yes.
I do remember that discussion somewhat about willingness of the railroad to allow users to share their right-of-way. We, I mean, I guess what I would want to convey is, we agree with you on, on the sentiment that it is. It would be a great place for a facility, and probably, but, and if it's, we have no problem turning long-term projects into short-term projects if there's a breakthrough.
Do you have any power line right-of-ways or anything in this area? I know that we...
LIPA and the LI double R kind of overlap in the Shinnecock Hills area.
Okay.
And then there's the question of like the, this is something that we've always kind of asked. There's an easement on these individual properties for, you know, LIPA and/or LI double R, but does that mean that the easement includes biking? It's an easement to allow LIPA to maintain their infrastructure. Certainly on the LI double R line, where the, their right-of-way extends wide enough for us to pursue. And we've walked that trail with some bike enthusiasts, Tom Neely and I, Neely and I, and there are, there's ways to limit our dependency on the LI double R, because you have trustee roads over there, you have private roads, and we have a lot of town-owned land. I don't have the best map available right now for this, this section, but it's, it's a jigsaw puzzle to some extent, on how we would piece our way to the village, and then from the village out.
So, like, I know, I'm sure Jonathan is aware, the county now is, is completing a bike trail that runs from Fort Jefferson all the way out to Shoreham, and it's a long LIPA right-of-way. It's really coming up beautiful, so.
So that one, that one, interestingly enough, that was our money. There was, there's a history here that goes back like 30 years, and there was going to be a trail along our railroad tracks exactly like that, and we had a congressional earmark that was associated with it, and extensive planning, and they, they just couldn't figure out how to get through some of the villages. East Hampton and Southampton put up a lot of resistance. They couldn't figure out where the parking areas were going. And the money ended up getting shifted to that other project, which is, which is too bad. Because a lot, a lot of effort went into it, but, you know, maybe it could get, it could happen again.
Yeah.
I think that segregation, I think, from the tracks, you have to, I know that, I spoke with Long Island Railroad folks in the past. Obviously, you need kind of some separation, so there is no access to the tracks, obviously, but...
Rails, rails, trails, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, people do it around the country. And I was also involved, you know, when I was in the AG's office, we did all that work with the DOT, with State DOT. They have a segregated bike trail that was built, essentially, it's going to, it's planned to go all the way from Fort Jefferson down to Hop Hog, and it's completed from Hop Hog to about the Smith, Smithhaven Mall area, essentially. And it's a segregated trail. It's not on 347. It's, it's, you know, isolated away from it. So it's, it's really, really came out nice. I mean, it was part of a whole, you know, hundreds of billion-dollar project where they expanded 347, added lanes on each way. It was significant amount of condemnation involved and whatnot, but, and a lot of disruption for five, six years of construction, but it's finishing now, and it's really, really came out very nice.
There's also this trail along the power lines that people like to mountain bike on. I mean, one day, maybe they'll bury those power lines, but you have a, you, you have a right-of-way that goes all the way through Southampton.
Sure. That's what I'm saying. The power lines run from Stony Brook out to Shoreham, and they're building that trail now, and it's finishing up. It's, it's a great trail, and it can lead you right to the Pine Barrens, and then from there, you go forever.
I believe that's this route right here, this dotted line section. I think that's the LIPA line, if I'm not mistaken, that does cut through Pine Barrens.
Yeah, I mean, that's a natural place. I think you're probably right. That's probably the power lines. Can I ask, can you go back to Hampton Bays for a second? I had a question about, so, yeah, right there. You've got, to the right of the screen, you've got the Shinnecock Reservation, and you've got, it looks like some biking infrastructure, but I, I don't, those are private. That's a completely, you can't... I don't think you're allowed onto that property as, there's no public right-of-way there. Unless the reservation opens that up, but...
Shared use path is what it's designated as.
I don't think we have permission to go on the, on the reservation, but I could be wrong.
I think you might be right.
Yeah, it, it could just be some, I mean, we, it's possible that in the, in the extent of the county, we may have missed a few places in terms of some local regulations, but...
You know, it's possible. Look, you know, anything's possible. Maybe the, maybe the Shinnecocks would welcome us on, but we'd have to just include them in the conversation.
Yeah, this looks like a con-plan is proposed, so this may have been picked up through the public participation portion of the formation of this master plan.
Right. Yeah, they tend to have signs on their roads that say no trespassing. So, just anyway, just let's make sure, if we're going to continue to put out maps like that, that we... So um, just anyway, just let's make sure if we're gonna continue to put out maps like that, that we ma- make sure there are stakeholders in part of that conversation.
Sure.
Um, we should, you know, I don't, I don't see it here, but one of my favorite places to bike um is uh on Meadow Lane all the way out to the county park. It's really one of the most beautiful bike rides. Um, and uh you probably should be included on this map, yeah, right in there. It's spectacular and then you have the county park at Shinnecock East.
I will note too that that we didn't, we do intend for this to be sort of a living um document. So you know, this is where we put pencils down in March twenty twenty, but we are um we are in the process of turning this into like an enterprise GIS map um so that it can evolve and that uh hopefully people, once we get the 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 um the actual built infrastructure mapped out separately, people can access it on their phones through like any sort of trail or bike um app and and sort of follow the routes and plan a trip on their phone. So we, we do have ambitions.
Put that down, I would come down either Halsey Neck or connected to the Gin Lane. Like go all the way down to the county park. And the view there is great at the Shinnecock East, looking at the inlet toward.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know the place, it is, it is beautiful.
The folks on Meadow Lane probably don't, don't want to encourage so many people to go down there, but it's public.
Some of my observations in the town is are that the widest roads are in fact owned by the county. And I would hope that in any improvement in the county roads, uh bike lanes would be part of that conversation.
Yeah, and and pursuant to our our complete streets policy, that is supposed to be the case, that whenever there's a re or they touch that road, they're supposed to put it back in a, in a, in a more complete fashion. Um, so that is, that is definitely the case.
Yeah, any other questions for Michelangelo or for Jonathan?
I'd like to thank Michelangelo and for all of his work and Jonathan for his input on this and uh it's gonna be a great thing.
And like we said, we'll, we'll be back soon to kind of give you an update on the tap grant and what we were thinking and what that is gonna really look like. And we hope to begin construction, I believe, in the uh, I believe in the winter of uh this coming year or perhaps in the early spring, kind of depends, COVID delayed everything. Um.
Will you, go ahead.
Yeah, well, and then we hope to launch the Bridge Hampton and Bike Share as well as the Long Beach uh region um in the coming weeks.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you about, this share, pedal share, what you, I had on the agenda additional locations. So Long Beach, just one that you wanna add?
And so, yes, that's, we're looking at Long Beach, uh Ocean Road, the, excuse me, the municipal lot by across from the Starbucks in Bridgeham downtown. Um, the LI double R station is our third location. Then we'd have one at the end of Ocean Road um and one at Sag Main Beach. And we've already walked this with Kristen Dulles from Parks and we have approval from Alex Gregor for the end of Ocean Road. So all of our ducks are are in a row and uh, you know, we're for the most part really connecting one uh hub to the next through a bike lane or a bike route.
Yeah, I like the idea of being able to go down Ocean Road and then head over to Scott Cameron and Me Cox. So that's proposed.
We looked at Scott Cameron, Me Cox, the issue uh Kristen identified um had to do with limited parking uh and and installing this infrastructure would impede the uh parking circulation and traffic circulation in the specific uh at the beaches um and partially because of COVID. Um, they, you know, there already been kind of taxed on parking. So uh that might be something we add in the, in the future. Uh, we might want to look at Watermill and how we could connect the Flying Point. You know, it's really because if we remember Zaxter, you could take that bike and leave it wherever, which for the most part Parks was not very happy about. Um, whereas Pedal Share is dock to dock. So we have to think about, well, if we're going in downtown Watermill, where can we leave it, Flying Point? If we're going in Bridge Hampton downtown, where do we leave it? Ocean Road or take it back. So um, that's, that's how we're trying to think about this.
Moving a little bit north, we are in, we are uh in communication with the Village of Sag Harbor. Uh, they are considering putting a pedal share station in the village somewhere. Uh, currently, I think they have some other considerations on play. Um, and the Park, Mashemewa Park, which is a privately owned, not for profit, is considering putting a bike share station there as well.
Great.
And I understand the county is looking, it hopes to in the near future contemplate how we could perhaps connect Greenport, Shelter Island to Sag Harbor, so one can get from the North Fork to the South Fork. It's, it's all about getting cars off the road, people being happier and healthier. And, you know, we've identified biking as a way we can do that.
Is the county or Michelangelo, is anybody working on the water taxi idea, which I thought was really awesome? We had a connection between Sag Harbor and Greenport at one point and it disappeared. But there was plans back in the days of the Sustainable East End Development Study Seeds that we were gonna get water taxis and you could bring your bike onto the water taxi and connecting all the like Montalk, Orient Point, Greenport, Sag Harbor, Riverhead, all by water taxi. Is that dead now or?
Jonathan, it's a.
I I'm not familiar, I mean, it's a great idea, I'm not familiar with those discussions, so I couldn't say one way or the other.
Yeah, it was really successful, the pilot that they did between Sag Harbor and Greenport.
Oh, wow, I did, I did not even know that that existed, if I'm being perfectly honest, that's, that's very interesting.
When was that again? When did we pursue that?
Actually about ten years ago.
Ten years ago.
So Mike, uh, thi- this is really great, I I like all of this. Um, it it seems somewhat eastern centric, I'm gonna make a plug for the western part of the west of the canal. Uh, that there, you know, there were plans to do similar things in the western part of the town. Is that, is that in this current review that you're presenting now?
So when we first contemplated this, we, we were focused on Hampton Bays, we had secured that grant. So there may, there was a logical framework to then pursue a bike share where we now have a bike share station at Good Ground Park. We have some Poncog Beach and Hamlet Center by the, by the post office and that is still there and it's still or uh moving forward. Um, so the the next westward expansion, which I guess could be considered as phase three, would perhaps include these quad and some connectivity there. But we haven't been uh in negotiations, conversations with Pedal Share and or the county on that. This is something we'd have to think a little bit more because again, we gotta think about synergy. How, you know, can one bike from West Hampton to Hampton Bays using Bike Share? Most likely not, these bikes are typically going one, one to two miles, maybe three miles. They're not used to that longer portions of distance. So it's really more of an inter hamlet connectivity rather than an intra hamlet. So um this is something that Jonathan and I and Janice can discuss further and then loop in Pedal Share and see what they they're thinking.
Um. Cause I, you know, there is, there is a lot of traffic on Dune Road from, you know, all the way to the county park and on the western side along Dune Road skipping, there's a couple of beaches there that goes over then to Pom Quack to Tyana and and, you know, to to Shinnecock Canal. And it's, it's a heavily used uh bikes, anybody who drives there, you know, quite often you're dodging bicyclists. And, you know, I think it's something as part of an inter connectivity idea. I, I, I like that idea because it connects the beaches that that could be a place to put dock stations or however that works out, but I, you know, I think it's something that worth, is worth looking at.
Uh, just to the point, John, I just saw something on social media, there is a company that started up in West Hampton with bike rentals.
Yeah, they have a rental company, but I, you know, I mean, as far as, you know, establishing the bike lanes themselves, particularly the road, as you guys know, that that's a, you kind of take your life in your hands biking down there and it's a beautiful bike ride, but you're dodging cars. Uh, you know, I, I stopped biking along there because I, you know, I almost got killed.
Um, I'm, I apologize to, I I have a hard stop at eleven o'clock, I have another Zoom um that I have to join. Um, so I I do apologize, but please know you can reach out to me at any time for any questions or follow up um and be happy to continue the conversation, but thank you so much for having me. Thank you for being with us, Jonathan.
Thank you, yeah, actually, we have a eleven o'clock agenda item too, so we need to wrap this up. But uh, thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, Michelangelo.
Thank you.
Um, so let's move along then in the agenda. And um I believe the next item is uh with Noraki Smith, the presentation of the draft twenty twenty annual financial report. Um, and we've got David Tellier, partner at uh Noraki Smith, Sean O'Malley, audit supervisor at Noraki Smith, Len Marchesi, our town controller. Um, we're gonna bring them in and of course uh twenty twenty was not a normal year. Twenty twenty was a highly unusual year. Uh, it was a pandemic year, one, once in a century event. Um, that's technically is not completely over and it presented some really unique challenges to the town financially, operationally, in terms of having to uh reinvent sort of everything that we do. And uh it certainly presented challenges to each of our offices that do receive revenues and um but uh particular challenges to the controller's office. Uh, and uh, you know, we are working with Noraki Smith on the annual uh audit of financial statements. And uh I'm gonna kick it over, Ilen, do you wanna introduce this uh, this topic a little bit and uh introduce the team members?
Sure, um, well, as you know, the town undergoes a, an annual audit um of all financial statements prior to us submitting uh or in conjunction with us submitting the AUD, which is the annual update document that the state controller requires us to submit. We've been using uh Noraki Smith for quite some time now. Um, I'm been very satisfied with their services. Um, they've been reviewing um pretty much all of the town finances as well as preparing special reports. Uh, Dave will go through them, he's the partner. Um, uh, and that's about it. We do have another audit that we do independently of this, which is for the CPF fund. I don't think they're gonna be presenting today, but they're kind of a component of this audit.
That's Colin and Donasky though, it's a different firm.
That's Colin and Donasky, correct. And we received a, a unqualified opinion with that indicating that as we have our statements presented, that's exactly how they are. So um they've incorporated them in an Iraqi's full town financial statements. So um I'll leave it up to Dave, he's our partner and uh he's been a port of contact here for this engagement.
All right, and these guys are, this is an independent review that's required by the state. And uh they do coordinate a little bit with the Audit Advisory Committee and I thank those members as well. But uh particularly with your office and your being able to uh provide them all the documentation that they need to conduct these reviews, so thank you, Len, for that. All right, let's uh, let's kick it over to Noraki Smith.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, just kind of reiterating what, what both Jay and Len had said. Um, we are an independent public accounting firm from the town. This is a, an audit, an annual audit that is required to be performed on a yearly basis. Um, and I'm just gonna kind of walk you through, give you some of the highlights um only because the actual statements that we are issuing uh probably are about a hundred and fifty pages. The long, so it's a lot of information, a lot of detail. But uh, you know, for you today, I feel like we'll just kind of go through and walk you through some of the conduct of the audit, give you some highlights on the financial statements and kind of just open it up for some questions uh after that. So again, thank you for allowing us to uh to present to you this uh this morning. Uh, again, my name is Dave Tellier, I was the engagement partner and had uh oversight of the audit engagement for the town. Also with me is Sean O'Malley, the supervisor who kind of led our, our, our team and worked with uh management to, on a daily basis to uh facilitate uh coordinating all the records and efforts. Um, the first thing is, uh, I think to congratulate the town uh again for receiving the award uh of certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Um, that is what this financial statement, it's a little thicker than than most because it's, it's called a consolidated annual fiscal report or a CAFR, um although they don't like you to, you know, refer to it as a CAFR anymore, but that's what it's really termed in the industry. Um, which gives the reader a lot more uh information relating to not only the conduct and and the uh the work that transpired for the town for the year, but also a lot of information specifically in the back schedules, which is the statistical section, which gives uh really ten year trends, not only on um financial things, but also debt service and uh and various items of the town, as well as a nice introductory section that um leads with the letter of transmittal from not only the uh the supervisor, but also the comptroller and kind of leads you into the financial statement. So it's a very detailed report, it's very well put together. Uh, we assist the town in in preparing it on a year to year basis. You did receive the award last year in two thousand nineteen. We anticipate that the town will receive the award for this year, the twenty twenty fiscal year as well. Um, and we, uh, again, I think a lot of that is really predicated on the hard work and effort that's done by uh by the town management in all facets, uh, you know, across the board. Um, you know, we obviously work a lot with uh the comptroller's office, uh, you know, looking at the, the financial records, but we also deal with a lot of other individuals throughout the town uh acquiring documents, asking questions, providing support. Uh, and and everything that we've um looked for or requested has been uh more than substantiated. So we really appreciate all the efforts from, from top to bottom, so thank you so much. Um, just kind of letting you know exactly what our services were. We obviously performed the audit of the financial statements for the year ended December thirty first uh twenty twenty. But we also perform, performed a, a number of other uh required engagements along with this, which was performing some, some work that we issued reports on for the receiver of taxes, the water districts, um your, your federal single audit, which is relating to federal awards that the town receives as well as monies received from the Department of Transportation or the uh for highway maintenance. So there's a number of other reports that we did also issue in conjunction with this, all of which are clean, uh unmodified opinions, everything is again well put in order. We did meet with the Audit Advisory Committee yesterday to present all of those reports in in uh again, a lot more detail than I will with you to hear today. And we went through uh any questions or or items that they wanted clarification on and and ended that meeting where everybody was on board with going ahead to submit these financial statements and for us to be able to present to you uh this morning. Um, and I, I think what I'd like to do is kind of just let Sean talk just a little bit about the conduct of the audit. I, I think Len had mentioned this a little bit earlier, is this that obvious, and Jay, that the um that the conduct was a little different, obviously due to COVID and stuff. So I'd like Sean just to kind of speak a little bit to how, how well the town was prepared for us and and the types of procedures we went through before, uh, we kind of lead you into some of the financial statement information.
Thanks, Dave. Um, so just to give you a high level summary of how our field work really goes, generally, we're onsite at the town for the, more or less the entire month of March. It's generally about a four to five week process from start to finish, just to uh complete and go through all the necessary documentation that we need to. Last year, uh, when we met with you, was right in the heart of when COVID all started. Um, so last year, about the first half of our field work was onsite, then the pandemic hit and then we transitioned to more of a remote uh environment. Unfortunately, the town's documentation is all stored uh electronically. And we're able to remote into those servers, we're able to still access everything we need to, regardless of whether we're onsite or offsite. So that really helps kind of expedite the process, there's little headaches in working remotely. Len, Dorothy, the whole comptroller's office really puts their foot forward and gets us what we need. If there's anything missing from the online servers, they're very responsive to us and we really have no issues in what we need to accomplish, whether we're onsite or not. This year.
See this, see this, John, I have, I have access to the whole town's network right here. That just demonstrates how we can work remotely very efficiently.
No, absolutely. And so last year, since we already kind of had a plan in place for how we had to do things remotely, this year we were kind of trying to transition to a schedule where we did a lot of work remotely. We were onsite for roughly, I would say, two days a week to go through various items that were not available to us remotely, to do all the interviews, to do all the uh questions, anything that we really need to do while we're onsite, we're able to accomplish without an issue. So for the most part, uh, our field work was complete. Uh, we went through everything we normally would, uh, we were satisfied with everything we saw um and we were complete by about early April.
And I think um the one, one item that um I don't think Sean had mentioned, which I think is really important to uh to communicate to the board is we had no audit adjustments. we had no audit adjustments. We, the, the books and records that as they were presented to us and as we reviewed and audited them were accurate, you know, to, to every degree that we, that we looked at. So I think that is probably one of the most remarkable things to talk about and say, because of, again, the transition of how the town was operating, you know, being onsite, being hybrid, we're being hybrid or, or being remote. And then they still come in, not that we didn't expect there to be issues, don't get me wrong. I, you know, we know the way that the town operates, but to still come in and know, know that everything was still operating efficiently, effectively, and to be accurate on top of it was just outstanding. So I want to make sure that we communicated that as well, because that's really kudos to the comptroller's office and all the hard work of all the individuals in there, you know, going through, especially this tough time to still run the town as smoothly as possible. So that, that was really a great accomplishment. And now just to give you a, a, just some information again, relating to the financial statements. I mentioned it before, our auditors' reports were all clean or unmodified opinions. And then for, just to give you some, some numbers, because you know, we're the accounts, we like to do that. On your full accrual statements, your government-wide statements, we had total assets of about $1.5 billion. Roughly about 1.2 billion of that really relates to your capital assets, which is the land, the buildings, equipment, all of that. Your capital assets for the current year increased approximately $46 million. As you know, over the last, you know, 10 years or so, with the inaction of the Community Preservation Fund or the CPF Fund, those numbers have really increased over the last decade because of that, which is obviously very good for, for not only the environment, but for the community and the town itself. So that's where those numbers lie. Your total liabilities, again, on the full accrual side, sits at a little over $545 million. In the current year, we did have a, a bond issuance of about $17.5 million. If you, a line share of this is really reflected within your other post-employment benefit obligation. I know I've spoken to you about this now for at least 10 years. Your obligation for OPEB continues to increase year over year, not only because of changes in actuarial assumptions and changes in healthcare costs and things of that nature, but also because the town being a government, you're only allowed to pay as you go. So as the, as the bills come in, we're paying them, but we can't set any money aside for future costs. And that's the real crux of why this, this, this number just keeps increasing year over year. But again, it's, it's not that the town is deciding not to do it. It's we are not allowed to do it by New York state law. So we're, we're doing everything we can. You're paying the bills on time, you're current. So that's all you could do. That's what we're doing. But for generally accepted accounting principles, we need to recognize it on a full accrual basis. Those numbers increased this year substantially, again, because of some changes in the actuarial assumptions, namely the discount rate, mortality tables, things of that nature, as well as the healthcare cost trend, which led us to our total net position, or what you will retain earnings, so to speak, for the town of about $918 million. Now looking, switching focus to your governmental funds, which is really the main operating funds of the town, which the town operates on a, on a daily basis. You have your various funds that account for the various transactions that are conducted throughout the, the year. The balance sheet, all of your governmental funds have total assets of $206.6 million, of which this is primarily consisting of cash and receivables at the end of the year. Again, your governmental funds are on what's called the current focus. So it's really, it's a modified cash outlook. So it's really cash in, cash out as far as what would be collected or received or needing to be paid within the upcoming year or within that year. So, so this, you don't have your long-term debt obligations. You don't have your capital assets being capitalized, things of that nature. So that's why the numbers are significantly decreased, but, but the line share is still, you know, resides within your cash and receivables. Your total fund balance for your governmental fund sits at $161 million, of which there are five classifications for fund balance. The largest being the restricted fund balance of $123.7 million. The line share of this is, is really concentrated within the CPF fund and, and some debt service areas and things of that nature. The rest of it is really, sits in $14 million of assigned fund balance, which is really all the other funds outside of your main operating or your, what they term the general fund, which has, is the only fund that can have unassigned or undesignedated fund balance, which that sits at $19 million. For the year, on the fund levels, you had a net increase in fund balance of about $30 million, with total revenues just under $198 million, with total expenses of about $187 million. And I mentioned before, you did have a, a bond issuance of about $17.5 million, which on your fund level statements is actually a revenue source. It's not a debt instrument. So that again is part of the revenue stream there. There were no significant new GASB pronouncements. There was a new one that was implemented this year called Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 84, which related to fiduciary activities. We assisted the town in developing the approach to implement this accounting standard, which really just changed the way in which some items were being recognized on the financial statements as being fiduciary. So there's just been a change in terminology where now it's, it's got to meet certain criteria, which we went through. Some items did still meet the criteria. So there is still a fiduciary fund. And it's now called, you know, it's a custodial assets and custodial obligations now. Anything that did not meet the criteria has now been put into the regular governmental funds in the various funds in which it's applicable to. And so that met the implementation for that standard. Outside of that, there have been no, there, there was no new accounting standards that we had to enact or change. So, so for the notes to the financial statements, pretty much remain consistent with the previous years. The terminology and the references and the disclosures are all consistent with the previous years. Outside of that, I wanted to kind of end this again on another great positive note. I think that, that speaks volumes of the town and its management. During our review of the audit, we found no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal controls, as well as we had no recommendations or suggestions on improvements to the policies or the procedures being currently transacted at the town. So again, for us, this is, you know, almost, you know, as clean of a, of a report as you could issue, having no audit adjustments, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no recommendations or suggestions, issuing a cleaner unmodified opinion, and, and all within the environment that we're operating in today. I think again, just speaks volumes at how well the, the, the comptroller's office has been put together and is running right now. So. So with that, that's kind of just our brief presentation. Sean and I would love to, if you consider that brief.
That is getting so big, it won't fit on the computer screen here.
You guys aren't going to be able to afford me next year. This is crazy.
Yeah, enough. No, it's, congratulations, Len. This is, and this has been a number of years in a row where there's A, been no reportable deficiencies, because there's certain things that if you don't have in place, they have to report to the state. There's no reportable deficiency. So. But the, doesn't appear to be any deficiencies of any kind. I guess there's always room for improvement, but we haven't been able to find what we could do differently to make it better. So.
Well, Jay, we're always looking for things to do better, all the time.
But I wanted to share the accolades that are headed your way, because you're doing a great job over there. Your whole team, Dorothy, and the whole crew in the controller's office. And I know, you know, every day, you know, I get the statements to sign and whether it's for, for the P cards or for issuing manual checks and you know, I'm constantly looking to just try to find one mistake so I can go, gotcha. It hasn't happened yet, you know. It's a, you know, it's, Mark does an incredible job over there, Mark Conrad, and the whole, the whole team. They're really on.
You know, you know what they say, Jay, when you watch the pennies, the dollars take care of themselves.
Yeah. So I'm still trying to, trying, trying to find that missing penny somewhere, but you guys are doing, doing a great job.
I thought you almost had me the other day with that marine purchase.
I thought so. I thought so. We'll find out. You know, they're, they're bad. Like when you run an organization as large as the town of Southampton, there is, you know, there's got to be mistakes along the way. It's impossible not to. But we have so many checks and balances to catch those.
Well, you know, you know, the, the board, at my request, I don't know, five, six years ago, increased our office with an internal auditor. So to the effect that we already do have, not only do we have people that do the work and then we check the work, Dorothy's work, I check, Dorothy checks Mark's, where everybody has somebody checking their work. We also have an, an internal auditor that reviews stuff in addition, even before these folks come around. So, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm very cognizant of public money and how it has to be safeguarded and the trust that's put in us. So I take it very seriously and these are the results of that seriousness.
That, that balance sheet, I guess largely because of land holdings, that $1.5 billion in assets, we're pretty in, in an enviable position. I don't know of too many governments, maybe even state governments that have a balance sheet like that in terms of holdings. That's a pretty remarkable.
It is. It really is.
In, in terms of prior year's recommendations getting implemented, and I, I know there were a couple of things, I think, in maybe in the tax receivers' office, there was an issue.
It was the tax receivers, which she's in the process of doing. So we feel that by next year, that will be implemented. And then the others, I believe, related to the justice court, which is just filings, which is just so hard, which I got, I was going to speak to Len and, and the Audit Advisory Committee of, you know, somehow, because I don't want to continue to hold that recommendation out there. It's something to do, because the court has to file within like nine or 10 days after the month. And sometimes it's, there's weekends and there's other things and they don't take that into account.
Jay, Jay, this has to do with the schedules of the judges. They need to come into the court on a regular basis to sign the checks that are remitted to the state controller. When a judge doesn't show up for three weeks, after the close of the month, the report is late. Six weeks. Thanks, Tommy John. It's, it's, that is in a nutshell, the problem. If the judges showed up at least during that first week of the month following the end, we can file these returns on time.
I am trying to appoint an administrative judge. And that will break the logjam in the scheduling and I think allow for exactly the thing that you're talking about, Len, to be fixed. So I'm just doing, I guess, a little bit more research in terms of how to do this, but we haven't had an administrative judge. Maybe we have in the past, but we certainly haven't had one recently. And I am looking to, to move that forward. I just have to talk to Kathleen a little bit more over in the attorney's office. But I think that will solve the problem.
And in conjunction, and in conjunction with hiring a new court administrator as well. I mean, I think bringing some things more into the 21st century and, and updating some systems there will be very helpful.
Right. Anybody else? Was there any, the trustees? Everything was okay, the trustees? Okay. So it's the justice court and the tax receiver.
Well, Jay, just let me reiterate, you know, this board transferred the accounting function of the trustees into my care several years ago. So they follow the same procedures as we do.
And Len, are you managing both of their funds?
Yes.
Because they have a, they're sort of bifurcated.
I, I, no, we, we manage 100% of their funds. We do 100% of their bank accounts, bank reconciliations, purchasing procedures. Every procedure that we follow on the town level, they follow. And just like, so instead of you signing the check, I, I go to and find their president to sign the check or whatever.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Well, I, I had a comment. For, for you, Len, thank you very much. I think we're all tremendously appreciated. I, I sometimes I stand in awe of what, what you, what you and your office do. Despite this, despite the board and its, its, its occasional needs, it may, may offer you financial challenges. But I, I very much appreciate what you do. And I think we, we can afford you at, at, at any price you have.
I'll say that, don't cost out.
Well, I support. When there are things that we need and we have those, those, those strained conversations on occasion, it's, you know, I, I know there's a voice of reason in the room and I, I appreciate that very much. So thank you. It's from this board member for everything you do.
Thanks, Tom.
He does earn his salary, that's for sure. And just in moving money around and getting the best interest rates, you know, to make sure that, you know, a lot of Len's recommendations, decisions we've made have saved the town millions of dollars. So we're, we're fortunate to have him on it like that. Any other? Any other comments?
I was going to say, Len, great report, really fantastic. And congratulations to you and your team.
Yeah, Dorothy, I, I can't underestimate the, the work that Dorothy does. She's very modest and she didn't want to log on here. I, I, there's only so much I can do to push her forward, because she's, she is really going to be the, the future of my department going forward. So she does 95, 90% of the work. She's really on top of a game. You folks should really be lucky to have her as your deputy and really the main accounting officer. And she's a very detail-oriented person who really does do a good job in, in running the accounting office. So I think the town is lucky to have her as well.
I'll echo that. The fact that when I walk into your office, she, she is still smiling is a big deal to me.
She has to deal with me too. That's even, I don't know how that.
I know, that's the hardest, the hardest part of the job.
I, I'd just like to echo, to say thank you to everybody, to Noraki Smith and Len to your office. And so when I got a copy of the presentation summary, I went right to number eight and saw no material weaknesses, no recommendations for improvements in policies. And I said, I guess I don't have to read any farther. Which I did, but congratulations and excellent job as always.
Yeah. I, I also want to thank Ed Money Penny and the Audit Advisory Committee over there too, you know, for their assistance. Anyone else?
Yeah, as always, Len, thank you and congratulations to you and your staff. I mean, it's one less thing that the town has to worry about. It's a great weight off our shoulders and I appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
All right. I, I think we're good. Congratulations.
Well, thank you again very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service and we look forward to, you know, next year.
Yeah, I, I think that there's a resolution on for the next meeting to accept this report. And that needs to be adopted so that we can submit it to the state on time.
All right. So.
Thank you. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you. Have a great day, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So I mean, on our agenda, I mean, we're moving along faster than the agenda. I have a 12 o'clock presentation on the draft solar code. I do see Janice logging in. And it's going to be hard for me to kill a half an hour here stalling. So I just wondering if we can move that 11:30, but we'll need Claire Shea too.
He's right there.
We're here.
Oh, great. So, yeah. So Janice, is it okay to take this early?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. We're so happy to be here today to introduce a draft of the solar, like utility scale solar facility. So as you know, you know, we moved ahead with battery storage, but really the other side of that battery storage is the renewable energy of solar panels. So we, as a, as a use in our code, we don't actually permit large-scale utility solar yet. And this is our, our first attempt at it. So Claire has worked on, very hard on developing this code. We, we both worked on it too. We both worked on the wireless, wireless code as well. And, you know, in current planning, you know, that gets implemented and worked on. So this is a similar thing where it would be a special exception and. You know, that gets implemented and worked on. So this is a similar thing where it would be a special exception and we'll go through it. But um. Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Claire to kind of go through the nitty gritty of the code and I can share my screen so we can go over it. But first, we just wanted to kind of introduce it and. Um, it's a new day for Southampton in terms of renewable energy and we're really excited to have this um, move forward. So if there's not any questions, I'll share my screen uh, for that. Okay, let me see. Uh. Okay, take it away, Claire. Okay. So um, the beginning of this is uh, like any, yes, and you know, I'm Claire Shea. The Assistant Town Planning Director. I've been working on this the last uh, couple months. In tandem with um, the battery storage. There's actually an application that's currently before the planning. That is also interested in implementing at least part of this. So we've, we've started to see interest from the public. On implementing these projects. Um, but the beginning of the project, um, I'm sorry, the beginning of the ordinance is the legislative intent. And this goes along, takes information straight from your sustainability plan um, for the intent of the project. And the hundred percent renewable energy goals. Uh, obviously, we we would be trying to meet that. So that's part of the intent. And then, of course, the nitty gritty, getting into the definitions and um, what is the basis? What are we talking about here? So we decided to call them um, the industrial or the commercial application, the utility scale solar facility. Um, it just seems most accurate. And we've, uh, of course, I've based on this in a couple different um, ordinances. From Virginia, it being the big one that we took from that. But that was also a recommendation from um, the APA, which is the American Planning Association. So um, these are they basically um, some ordinances that have been implemented and are operating right now. And being subsequently operated and used.
In the Northeast. Germaine to our situation.
Right, exactly. In similar issues like providing um, you know, open space and corridors for. For a wildlife too, not just building. Right. And so you see here in the purpose, it's provide standards for the placement, design, construction, monitoring, modification and removal of solar facilities. Address public safety, promote the development of the renewable energy resources, minimize impacts. On scenic, natural and historic resources and provide ad- adequate measures for decommissioning. So that's the basic total purpose of this. Right. And then you go through, uh, these are the specific definitions of the new section that's being created for this utility. Solar uh, scale solar facility. And these are specific.
Do you want to go into what that is?
Yeah. So what we've determined is um, in excess of twenty kilowatts. And I think we've gone back and forth. It may be twenty-five that we've determined. Anything less than twenty-five kilowatts would be considered accessory. To a house and not something that would generate um, utility scale solar on a significant level. So that was the cutoff. We've seen twenty, we've seen twenty-five. Um, we have give, uh, preliminary given this to the um. The solar companies and they've come back and said twenty-five and it seems reasonable. So we might ch- change that number to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Kilowatts there. Um, but then after twenty-five until about two, two, you see the two fifty kilowatts. That equals about an acre um, of land being used for solar coverage. And what we thought is that um, capacity of twenty-five, am I looking at that right? Okay. Oh, yes. Between twenty-five and two fifty is the small scale. That's the second definition you see there. And that equals between seventeen fifty square feet or an up to an acre. So that's small scale. We want to encourage people to. Have a uh, or companies to have a small facility um, that might be used in conjunction with their own. Business or they want to sell back. But that would be easy lift. That would be more permitted, not a full blown special exception. Environmental review or or the such. The larger one is up to two fifty kilowatts. I'm sorry, beyond the two fifty kilowatts.
Right.
And that would be between forty thousand, which is one acre-ish, and um, up to fifty acres. We don't want to create this to be, you know, anything bigger than that. So they could put them um, in conjunction with each other. So there's a little bit of language related to that.
Yeah, so so it is quite a bit of area that you could have a large scale solar facility. And aggregate parcels to a maximum of fifty acres. So, and we can provide mapping as, well, what does that even mean? And and talk about that um, some more. But that's the way, you know, what we've come up with. And maybe that's not, I don't even know if there's fifty acres that anybody can aggregate at this point. But, you know, that's one of the standards. So maybe that's too much, maybe that's not enough. But but we put that in there for your consideration.
Right, exactly. And then this, this is the exemptions, which basically is a small scale. But there's the twenty-five that we talked about. Yeah, um, and then less than that would be accessory to a single family residence, multifamily or commercial uses. Um, anything, it's not to say that commercial uses couldn't put a larger facility, that that would just count as a second use on the property.
Yeah, this is really more about your primary, your major use is solar. We're not really, those exempt things are what we're we're saying are, you know, you're just a business and you want to put solar on your roof. Or your house is solar on your roof or on your property. That's not, that's exempt. That's not what this is about.
Right, exactly. And then it's considered accessory. So that's not been defined to date and that we wanted to keep that in there. What is accessory? So, um, and the applicability, that would just be, you know, the code. This applies to certain code. Um, and this is, um, we came up with this as a opportunity site, taking junkyards, sand mines. Golf courses where there's no scenic issues. Um, land designated by D E C is on environmental cleanup sites. At any other property that's substantially disturbed. You know, we tried to capture everything with one through four. But five could be some other type of um, parcel that would be being used for something. Um. So uh, we wanted to capture that is. Opportunity sites. And then we went back, then went to the si- uh, area that what was important to us. You know, uh, the Central Pine Barrens, of course, the aqua protection, um, lands in agriculture. You know, that would be important. Historical properties, um, you know, a.
Conservation areas.
Exactly. So these are all very, they're important from us, from all other perspectives, the wetlands, the woodlands. Um, R W B may not be appropriate. And then um, and then not in conjunction with a single family residence on a large scale. Go ahead.
Does this code prohibit uh, the the construction of of solar panels or is it area or does it suggest?
Well, it basically says, these are o- opportunity sites and these are avoidance areas. So if you came in and said, I want to put fifty acres of solar and aqua protection, we would pro- we would be like, well, this is an avoidance area. You have all these clearing standards, you have shade, you have, you know, problems. Like this is not the, you know, it's laid out. Like, no, those are places to avoid. Want to steer people to where it's most appropriate, which are reuse and recla- reclamation places. Like sand mines, junkyards, places where there's already lots of open space without the clear trees. Because there's a whole sense of green for green. You know, we really don't want to have to clear fifty acres. You want to be where it's already been substantially disturbed or cleared. Um, not by violation.
I just, I I, I'm also wondering if there are clear cutting standards in here as well, but I I'll wait.
We could add that.
We do have coverage standards.
Yeah, we could add something about clear cutting.
And buffer standards, significant buffers, where we'd want to keep um, uh, wildlife corridors. Open if there is some clearing. Say they're not in the aquifer protection overlay district, but they uh, do want to clear woodlands. We'd want to keep some buffers so that it's not uh, just cleared in that case. And then there's a coverage standard up to sixty-five percent for any given lot. That can't be covered by um, not the entire thing could be covered by this solar panel. Sixty-five percent is the maximum. And then you get a lot.
So I I have a question, if if you're gonna take questions in the in the middle of this, um. You know, one of the things also to consider, obviously, is the connectivity to the grid for sellback purposes, particularly. Those businesses, but also the ability for us, what build on disturbed areas or brownfields or, you know, what are. We're typically called unusable sites or anything else. It it also, does this also offer us the opportunity to. Uh, have remediation conducted as a part of creating that those those sites that have already been disturbed, have no trees on them. We we have quite a few. I know you've done a survey, Janice, on that and will continue to do that. Um, can you just get to that quickly?
Yes, um, we uh, actually did a map to see where these sites were, known ones. But we kept the definition of flexible, that D E C cleanup, it's either a D E C doesn't need any cleanup site. Or eligible for one.
Does it say that?
Yeah.
When, or eligible, should we say?
It's in the definition. In the definition itself, um, I think we said, or eligible, see, eligible for such a program.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's what I was referring to. Great.
Yeah, get that definition. And then um, yeah, your connectivity to the grid, we also did that. We did a a druff, a rough map, which we can. Uh, work on where we tried to find out where it makes sense to put them because they're close to a substation, obviously. Um, but that is also part of the requirements when they submit it. See, if you can look at this part of the general requirements, they have to provide. Yeah, this makes sense. Leipa is already saying, yes, this makes sense for you to develop solar here because we can connect to it. Easily, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Go on, this is, I guess, the general requirements. And then this is, I I say again here, because it's very particular. It's not to be on the commercial scale associated with a single family residence. It would be inappropriate. Um.
So if you have a house and you've got, you know, the back fifty or something and you're like, I was gonna put solar back there, you'd say, no, you'd have to. Subdivide off the house and, you know, that's a commercial. This is the level of commercial, we treat this as a commercial use.
Right. So that's that. And then um, and then that's the use being primary accessory, so.
Yeah, and submitting substation and infrastructure of information. Um. Because sometime, I I, on the nor- you know, in Riverhead, there was an issue where they they're proposing to put. A lot of large scale solar on a golf course. And that was one thing, but no one talked about the fact that they needed a fifty foot high. Substation upgrade structure, right in front of every, you know, and that caused a lot of consternation and upset. So that we learned from that to tell, you know, submit the substation information and any upgrades upfront. So we know what we're dealing with. Um.
So that includes uh, large scale storage as well as part of that? In those definitions?
I think so, yeah. I mean, are you, it may not be planned to have any battery storage. They may be storing it in the grid itself, you know. So if there are planned battery storage, we need to have that, yeah.
Yeah, but I think you make that distinction. If I, I think I read that in in this, that you make that distinction, just for the public's clarification.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I'll ta- I'll take a look and maybe add that to G. Yeah. Okay, um, we say that, you know, new new utility connections should be underground. Um, and we're asking for, you know, um, an inventory. We do this with wireless communication facilities too. We ask them for an inventory, see, you know, just basically where else are these being proposed? So we kind of know the full impact of all of them at the time, that we're reviewing it instead of, you know, sort of them happening in succession. And then someone saying, wait a minute, we're being overloaded by, you know, these things. And and so we just want to be able to know what's planned. What's happening in the area at the time.
Exactly. Um, and of course, the state and federal requirements have to be met and the billing code states safety standards to be met. That's all explained there. Um, coordinate with emergency services staff, of course, um, the signage. This is all like. As, you know, I plan for the site plans, what we're anticipating and the support equipment. Everything has to be um, um, outlined.
Get shown on the plan.
Yep. So um, and this is just the procedure, um, very, taken very similar to these to other applications or projects like this. Um, these are just the procedure with how you submit. Um. And um, then this is the designation. So this is encouraging, as we said, the opportunity sites. The junkyard, the sand mine, um, the environmental cleanup sites in the zones. Um, so we will allow them as um, uh, small, this would be permitted in the residential zones. If they meet the standards which are outlined later on. We've determined and recommended nothing smaller than R forty. It would just not be appropriate. We don't, I don't think we, you know, you wouldn't want the small half acre lot being next to a commercial. Project, but R forty seems to make sense because we're making forty thousand square feet. The difference between a small scale and a large scale, you know, the the one acre piece of property. So if it made sense to me that that would be uh, appropriate. Um, and then also the small scale in the uh, H B, S C B, M Motel zone. And you can notice the R W B zone is not included in that. Um, and then um, we'd want to, small and large scale. Is L I forty uh, or L I two hundred, that it would be appropriate to have commercial. Large or small scale in those and they would be permitted if they met, again, the standards. If they don't meet the standards. But they meet the special exception standards, they could still be reviewed. Um, but this would be an easier process with the planning board. If they meet the standards. Um, and then that's what that last sentence says is about. If you don't meet the standards, then you have to go for the special exception review. Um, and then below is the standards. As I said, the seventeen fifty square feet. Is the cutoff, it's the minimum size for the larger um, or a small scale.
Of actual the solar surface area of the solar panels themselves.
Correct, exactly, yeah. And then the maximum surface area and on fifty acres would be the fourteen thousand.
And that's just that figure?
Four hu- yeah.
Seventeen fifty times fifty? Is that where we came at number?
It, I think it has sixty-five percent of fifty acres. That would be that. So that would be the ma- and that's where three comes in, which is the the maximum coverage would be sixty-five percent. And then, of course, in any case, aqua protection overlay district clearing requirements would have to be followed. Um. Yeah, yeah. So provide an inventory. These are the um, requirements for the application process. B um, and C would be the setbacks um, related. So in a commercial zone such as L I forty, L I two hundred. H B A S C B, um, they would have to meet the underlying front, rear and side yard requirement. So those are re- like a reduced or equal to any commercial project. Um, but if you're in a residential zone, the setbacks would have to be two hundred feet from any residential dwellings. Or platted future residential development. So if there's a new subdivision next door, you'd have to have the two hundred foot setbacks for the project. From that uh, parcel. So, and then the next one would be a hundred and fifty for any other zoning setbacks. Including implanted land.
And that's typical with how we do it with uh, the cell towers as well.
Yeah.
Same, same idea.
Exactly. And the purpose of that is the exposure for the EMS. There's not much uh, information about the correlation. Except they feel that there is some correlation and getting away, even actually Leipa has some um, information. Where either showing power lines and the distance and at a hundred feet and a hundred and fifty feet, it is being reduced. To where uh, it shouldn't have any um, impact. And that's the two Milagost, I'm I'm learning about. Uh, this stuff, the Milagost you can see is the connection. But so that's a standard by which they, if they want to vary the above setbacks. They'd have to prove that they meet that and it wouldn't impact um, especially residential uses, I think.
Right, so this just keeps us, you don't have to prove anything and there's no preemption by FCC here, but we just are erring on the side of caution. Putting in the setbacks that have been designated as not harmful if they're met. And then we, you know, don't have to worry about uh, EMS exposure.
So, and and that, that's for, that's for a a typical connection line, not shielded. So there's no, that requirements on the, on the utility side, right?
There is not much they can do to shield it. There's really nothing they could do in terms of building it to stop. It is just that, it's just that, once you get the distance, that's what reduces it. Not like lining it with lead or anything like that. It real, that could not, they couldn't do anything to that effect.
Yeah, you're just kind of stepping away from the electromagnetic field. Um, so you're set away from it, so therefore it wouldn't affect you.
Trying to make it straightforward, you know, because it is, you know, I'm I'm not a specialist, so I don't know.
We do want to take that seriously. You know, you're dealing with, you know, maybe fifty acres of solar or something. So you want to have be, you know, if there is an electromagnetic force. Around it, we would like it to be setback and, you know, a buffer. So we don't have to even worry about it.
Okay.
Yep, and then the height, this is just typical, the twenty feet um, for the uh, solar panels. Uh, and then um, oh, ten feet for the panels and then twenty feet for any accessory.
oh, ten feet for the panels, and then twenty feet for any accessory building. And then landscaping, we'll go through this, there would be a landscape plan, we'd want a significant, some buffers, especially if you're talking about two different uses. Obviously, if it's more industrial and land, there'd be less consideration for that. Um, the tr- there's the tree cutting, we want to make sure that we're retaining the larger trees, um, so there'll be some, um, analysis related to that. And then the ground cover requirements, that's all associated with landscaping, and then fencing, this is something where, where I started looking at this, so G and H, um, they're related in terms of when you put solar panels, it, it sounds good, because you can get wildlife to go, you know, they can go under solar panels, no problem, but once you start fencing it up with the, um, you know, the chain-link fencing, you might be preventing wildlife corridors from happening, which is H, so there would be a whole analysis related to that to create and maintain wildlife corridors, if you're putting up large facilities. And then the design of accessory buildings, that's pretty typical with any site plan, and, um, maintenance code compliance, that's all, you want a certain level with that, glare, um, the anti-reflactive coating, um, so that's something to be looked at. Then the lighting too, which I don't know if there's typically lighting associated with any of these projects, but we just wanted to put some standards in there, of course, meet the code, um, vehicular paths, they could be part of buffers, um, and then noise, cuz there's generators, obviously, and battery storage does also generate noise, so that could be a consideration, has to meet the code. Um, and then, of course, the planning board, as they review these things, by have additional conditions, um, for every project that comes through. And then these are the special exception standards, um, they would be used in conjunction with three thirty-one twenty-two, which is the town's planning general standard, and then these are specific ones that need to be met, um, during the process, and they're related to some of the, the issues up above. Um, the height should be appropriate, the proximity to other facilities, the compatibility of uses on adjacent and nearby properties, topography, the tree coverage again, uh, the design shall be, that the effect of reducing or eliminating visual truthfulness, and the proposed ingress and ingress to the site. And then decommissioning, so with these facilities, and this is pretty much with all the, the codes that I reviewed, they all had some sort of decommissioning, which is not typical with any site plans that we have, except actually solar. We have decommissioning with solar, I'm sorry, with wireless, but we don't have anything with teeth, we don't have bonds, but these are where you, if you just left this infrastructure there, it could harm the environment. So we probably wanted to establish some type of bond, um, if they're not, this is what we have, is one year, not used within one year, that a bond would be triggered, a performance bond would, they be on the hook to remove it, and they, we'd hold the money for that period of time, which in this case could be twenty years, could be more, um, if these solar facilities, um, operate successfully, so. Um, but that would be the process with that.
Um, I think that's the biggest last issue, right?
Yeah, so then they have a decommissioning plan that gets approved, they, we require the bond like Claire said, and then if it, if this facility is not being utilized anymore, um, you know.
We've got twelve months.
Or we get like a, you know, no- notice of intent type of thing that they're leaving, then that all kicks in.
Right, and then the three, uh, thirty-one sixty-two point two is just the reference that there is a new, uh, special exception, uh, standard, and that's described above, of course, and then this would be one twenty-three thirty-nine point two is part of the building code, which would outline that, um, standards for solar energy systems.
Can I ask, how does this code deal with, uh, like a large building, like a King Colin or Stop and Shop or something, that wants to do a solar rooftop and generate more power than their own needs, is, is that contemplated within this?
It is, and if it's less than an acre, they're talking about putting on that roof area, um, but, you know, to generate, to go back into the system, they could do that permitted, planning board would review it, probably not even a public hearing.
Yeah, those are like part of these, unless they exceed this, it's sort of, you know, a, a rooftop thing, you know, only, only like maybe at Gabreski, you know, the PDD there has so many, so much flat roofs, that you could actually get some level of, you know, utility scale.
About like a, a parking area, like, I don't know, they had a big parking lot and they wanted to do carports, solar carports and things like that.
They could do it, and, and the planning board would look at it, um, again, up to an acre, they could do it as a permitted use, but the planning board would still look at those, um, you know, glare, is it, you know, tucked in the back, then that totally makes sense, you know, where it's not visually obtrusive.
But it's a good point, it's not actually clear, and we can fix the code to really account for those scenarios, you know, so we could.
Well, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but like at Gabreski, there's, the, the federal law supersedes that, uh, particularly because it's an airport, so they have.
Well, there, we did actually, they could have done it, and the FAA would have allowed it, but they did not make them in the PDD.
Cuz I know, uh, a number of years ago, we, we looked at putting, uh, ground-based solar, uh, you know, on the northern side of the airport. The FAA, uh, nixed that because of, you know, they were concerned about interference with pilots.
Right, the sunlight bouncing off the solar walls and blinding.
Yeah.
Isn't there, isn't there a, an array there somewhere, though, on?
I think there is, there is.
There is, right?
Oh, there, yeah, there is, you're right, but it's not, uh, it's positioned properly, it was just the FAA has certain requirements at, at transport or at, at airports.
Yeah, sure, of course, yeah, that makes sense.
That, that's the only point I was making, and.
Do you get a lot of, uh, a lot of heat that comes off, you know, of those black surfaces? I would imagine that it would get very hot above the solar panels, and that would cause rising air as well, but I don't know if that would interfere with aviation, but it, it.
That's not something that, that I, I've heard of or, or had to deal with ever, um, uh, they, they are, in fact, ventilated, so, you know, there is some heat, but, uh, you know, they're really designed, you don't wanna overheat a photovoltaic array anyway, so that, that's built into the design.
Oh, that's good, um, all right, um.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
So, um, actually, just two, so the size up to fifty acres, um, so hypothetically, somebody could buy up two hundred half-acre home, homes on lots, demolish all those homes, and put in a fifty-acre solar system?
Well, I mean, hypothetically, yes, but would that be cost-effective? I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes any sense, but yes, you could theoretically, yes.
A- and it just, you know, I'm not sure how many large parcels we have, that you wouldn't have to combine a bunch of smaller parcels, um, that are getting up towards that fifty-acre number, um, but also, as Tommy John had, um, inferred, I, I, I am concerned about the clear-cutting standards, you know, I think it's kinda antithetical to, say, you're putting up a solar array and cut down a forest for it, so I, I think that we need something like that.
Yeah, there was issues, Brookhaven Town had that issue as well as the, uh,
It did, yeah.
The LIPA, uh, property up in the Shoreham area, there was a state-owned property there.
Trees are solar collectors.
Yeah.
Air givers.
Yep, we are happy to tighten that up and make it very clear, like, and write it as, you know, more specifically, you know, properties that are proposing to clear are not, you know, eligible or something, like to clear more than.
Not the intent of the, this, of the, these amendments, the intent is to obviously take advantage of those undisclosed, those disturbed sites, or where non-buildable sites, that's really the goal here, and in doing so, help us meet our energy, our stated en- energy independence goal, uh, and our, our, our carbon goal in twenty forty, so. Uh, but, you know, the, the idea here is to like the, you know, the proposal for North Sea Landfills, that you have these areas that are not buildable, and that would be the target of, I think, any business that wants to do this. Uh, you know, I, I think we could, we could tighten that up, Janice, i- if, if necessary, but, you know, nobody here has any intent of cutting down, uh, you know, forests to put in solar roofs.
Great, and we could write in the avoidance area, Julie, like existing residential parcels aggregated for this purpose are, are considered avoidance, or something along those lines.
Well, why, though, is that a bad thing, if somebody combined three residential lots to get enough land? It might be an okay thing.
True, I mean, you're not helping your affordable housing goals, but you might be fine.
I, I, I think the biggest thing here is what are, what are our total energy generation, uh, requirements are going to be to try to offset some of the, obviously, the high cost of grid-provided energy, but also to help us meet our goals from the carbon standpoint as well as energy independence, so, you know, I, I think that's on a case-by-case basis. Uh, I, I, I suspect that that would priority, not a rule.
Okay. But we get that point and, and agree, and we'll take another look at, you know, the fifty-acre standard, if that's, you know, too much, or, you know, even possible anyway, like where.
What, how does, maybe we've discussed this, but did we talk much about farmland and the potential that somebody might wanna convert prime agricultural soils or preserve farmland toward a, to s- a solar system?
Yeah, that's a problem to us, I mean, right now, on preserved farmlands, where we own the development rights, that would not be permitted. The only thing that would be permitted is solar to operate the farm itself, if someone's farming, so using, you know, there's a, there's a large push to use ag lands for solar farms, but that doesn't really help us with our, you know, goals of being self-sustaining food generation and putting to good use farming practices and, you know, primex soils, so i- i- it's a little bit, I think we have enough disturbed areas and land, sand mines and things like that, that could be used first, um, that I think the ag lands, um, you know, it's, they're in a state ag district, they may be able to do it, because the state basically, you know, they'll let you do anything, but, um.
Can a farmer, though, a farmer can do it for his or her own purposes, correct?
Absolutely, yeah, yep.
To help.
Pretty prevalent.
Farm to utility stick-out solar, we would argue that's an avoidance area, especially if the town owns the development rights.
Yeah, but for private farms, I mean, I, I would encourage, uh, farmers to, for, you know, to use solar to offset their energy costs, it would make sense, but not to replace.
They could do that today, yeah, they could do that right now.
Yep.
You know, what, in some of the western towns, I've seen a lot of the, uh, side farms, unfortunately, become, uh, solar fields, and there's a large ones in the Calverton area as well as Shoreham.
Well, we could establish some sort of prioritization, right, Janice and Claire?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then, you know, that would be something that the planning board would have to consider, uh, where the priorities are, you know, what are priorities of preservation against our priorities of energy needs, and the, the priority is the use of unusable lands.
Yeah, that's a good point, and I think that's what this whole pur- purpose of this inventory is too, right? So you can say, we have them here and here, and we, you know, our pri- so maybe we'll kinda look at it in terms of this inventory and prioritization of where you wanna steer people toward, cuz I think, you know, over- overall, the industry wants the direction, they don't wanna waste their time creating plans and proposals that are going to be, you know, dismissed, they want to know where you want them to be. So I think it helps everyone, and it streamlines everything, so we want renewable energy, and we, we say we do, then we need to figure out where is the best place to put it.
Without cutting down large swaths of trees.
Right.
Right.
Or negotiate, you know, or losing something else that's just as important, right? So it's kinda like, well, it's a balancing act, I guess, to some extent.
Hmm. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, so what's the next, what's the next move, you're going to?
We'll tighten this up and, uh, circulate it, for, we just wanted to put it out there, so you have a chance to look at it, and obviously, you'll want more opportunity to read it on your own and, and digest it, we've, we've gone out to some, we went to Jewel, our CCA administrator, and some folks, um, related to them to look at it, we'd like some more input from the industry now, uh, who can say, well, this works for us, this doesn't. We have had some feedback already from, from people in the industry, so, and that way, um, and then when you're satisfied that, you know, we, we can put it on for a public hearing.
Okay.
Great, thanks for your time, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so, um, the next item on the agenda is executive session for personnel litigation acquisitions, um. Anything else before we go into executive session that any board members wanna bring to our attention?
Executive was supposed to start at one, are we starting now instead of one?
Well, it's twelve oh eight, um, you guys want fifteen minutes? Jim, are you okay, starting before one?
Yeah, yeah, we're good, I think, um, everybody knows things have been moving ahead, so, uh, I'm ready on my topics, I believe Sandra is as well.
You wanna take, uh, fifteen minutes, that would bring us to, I know, it's almost twelve ten, so, you wanna just say twelve thirty, we'll start?
Yeah.
Give everybody a little bit of time to get a bite or something?
We should be congratulated, that's, I think this is a first.
All right, so let's, let's reconvene in executive session at twelve thirty, um, in executive session, we have, uh, personnel, litigation, acquisitions, um, confidential legal, all right? So I'll make a motion to end our work session with the executive session on those items.
Seconded.
Seconded by Captain Bouvier, all in favor?